We'll take some kicking off. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the April 28th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. At this time, I'd like to have Craig give us an indication.
We're going to start these meetings by coming before you and acknowledging that we need your presence here today and need your wisdom and discernment to be imparted upon us. Father, thank you for the blessings of our county and how you have provided resources for us, including leadership resources. Father, you give us all manner of good blessings here in our community, including public safety, that is, at the top of the list. Father, thank you for the men and women who serve us so faithfully every single day, who sacrifice their time, their effort, their own personal safety on occasion. Father, thank you for them for what they do to protect our community. Father, I pray that you just bless our time here today and help us to be good stewards of the privileges that you've given us to be a part of our government in Christ's name.
Thank you. All right. I guess considerations approval March 31.
Some move.
Second.
I'd like to have some public comment.
Better hurry up. Any discussion?
He made a grand entrance, for sure.
All approved. Say aye. Aye. All opposed. Like so. None. Any other business?
We don't have any today.
All right. Let's move on to new considerations.
All right. The first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Leonard Busby of the Busby Companies. Mr. Busby is seeking the conditional use permit to place a billboard on this property on Old Fannin Road. It's the farmer's market there on Old Fannin. The property is Zone C3. That's an aerial show in the building. This is a view of that property. The sign is going to go in the northwest corner, which you can hardly see, but it'll be right It's going to be a total of 484 square feet. The overall height is 35 feet. This is a view from the eastbound side showing the sign superimposed on the property. It will have a brick and stone base. The base of the sign will be fully landscaped with planters or shrubbery. This is a westbound view. This is just a view of the property there on Old Fannin for the farmer's market, and these are surrounding properties. Mr. Busby is here today if you have any questions for him.
I'll make motion to public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I got one question. Is this the same? Is this same Busby that Busby signed?
Yes, sir.
I mean, been here for a long time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. What thoughts?
All opposed. About like so. All right. Motion carried. Number two, Ms. Renee.
There's a rezoning request for Martin O'Neill on Ben Chapman Road. Mr. O'Neill is seeking to rezone four parcels at the end of Ben Chapman Road from A2 to RE1. He's proposing a large lot development of 10 acres or larger on a 237-acre parcel. And also, he's rezoning a future of 618 acres that joins it. It's shown as future there on the map. That's the part that will be the future development. This is his plat, his preliminary plat. It shows 16 lots. All of the lots will be at least 10 acres in size. This is that plat for the future development. And then this is a view of the entrance to that property. We did receive a set of restrictive covenants. They state that no lot can be less than the 10 acres in size. No lot shall be resubdivided without consent from the Board of Supervisors. They set the minimum heated and cooled living area under roof as 2,000 square feet. And then the developer will be responsible for maintaining the road until 50% of the property has been sold. After that, the Property Owners Association will have the sole responsibility for maintenance of the road. I'm not sure if he's here today, if you have questions.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Jay. All in favor, say aye.
Is this going to be a private road?
Yes.
Okay.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, number three.
There's a conditional use permit for Ryan Murphy at 6694 Highway 25. Mr. Murphy is seeking the conditional use permit to operate a landscape and farm supply store and also his landscape business. This is the Duncan Marine Buildings on Highway 25. It's a 4.16-acre parcel, and the property is Zone C2. That's an aerial view of the property. You can see the existing two buildings. And this is the survey plat showing that 4.16 acres. You see the main building in the front. It will be used for the landscape and the farm supply store. And then the secondary building in the back will be for the landscape business. Mr. Murphy is here today if you have any questions for him, and these are views of that property.
This is Daniel's district, and Daniel isn't here.
I think he's okay with setting a hearing.
Okay. Is?
Yeah, Daniel said he's good going to set a public hearing.
Right. This, you're planning to buy the property where?
Duncan Marine.
Uh-huh. Is that all the property that they own there, or is it going to leave some?
He sold the back. He sold the back.
Yeah, the back and the side have been sold. Daniel.
All right.
I talked to Daniel just to...
Okay. Well, across 25, it gets into my district. Where are we at over there?
Just north of Polly Bush Road. What, a quarter mile north of Polly Bush? This is it.
No, no, no. I mean, the property comes out at Stoll Road. That property that Ryan has.
No, Steve, this is going to be further south. This is just north of Polly Bush right there. Duncan Marine location.
Well...
Steve, are you wanting to know what Ryan is doing?
What are we, what's the plans for that? We got to a point, and now it's just...
Oh, yeah. This is totally separate from that, Steve. And this is totally separate from on your side, outside 25. That was that residential. That's totally separate.
Ryan, what are you going to do with that property?
Landscape supply, just like it says here.
No, 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 no.
The old farm, we're growing trees out there right now.
Growing trees.
It's safe for a nice paved road out there.
All right. I make a motion that we set it based on what I'm hearing. Daniel says he's okay.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right.
All right. The next item is a conditional use permit for Robert M. Foxworth at 141 Builder's Square. Mr. Foxworth is seeking the conditional use permit to operate an art gallery in the lobby area of an existing building at 141 Builder's Square. And also, he'll have a private studio with tattooing in the office spaces in this building. It's a 1.06-acre parcel. The property is Zone C3. This is an aerial view of that property. It's at the end of the road, at the end of the street. And this is the existing building there. The application stated that the signage for the business would only read Blackmore Gallery. That tattoo would not be in the name. There will be no walk-in traffic. All clients are scheduled by appointment only, and they would have normal business hours and would close no later than 9:00 p.m. So these are surrounding properties. And Mr. Foxworth is here today if you have questions for him.
Hey, Renee, just out of curiosity, what cause is to be on our agenda today?
He applied for the conditional use permit. Tattoo parlors are a conditional use in the C2 zone, and they are in the C3 as well.
All right. Okay.
Do y'all have any questions for Mr. Foxworth?
Mr. Foxworth, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward.
Yes, sir.
Do you operate anywhere else in Mississippi?
I currently am on Old Fannin Road at a Hard Rock Tattoo.
I tell you what I'm going to do.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to make a motion that we set it, but I'm also going to get the address and of your other places of business.
Okay.
And visit, and that'll give also people that are around you an opportunity to say that they are for or against this.
Okay. Now, the establishment that I'm in now is owned by somebody else. I'm stepping away because we have a different opinion as far as how business should be run. Not to speak ill of anybody else, but...
Well, just let our people have your contact information and the address of your current business, if you don't mind, or I can find it.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And I make a motion that we set it, and that means that everybody around you is going to have an opportunity to tell us what they think, okay?
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion by Steve. Second by Jared. Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right. Number five.
There's a rezoning request by Scott May for a development called Mulligan Place. It's on Mulligan and Clary Road. Mr. May is seeking to rezone 159.86 acres from RE1A to RE1. That's an aerial view of those properties. And this is his preliminary plat. He's proposing a residential subdivision with 52 lots. All of the lots will front on the public road. No lot will, the lots will be 2.04, 4 acres or larger, and he's proposing a minimum heated and cooled square footage of 2,200 square feet.
What are the widths of those lots? From the street front is there?
They meet the requirement of 100-foot minimum lot width.
I was just, how, do you know how wide it is? Are they 100?
We'd have to look at the plat to see.
At least 100.
Yeah, they meet the requirement. They meet the regulations. I'm not sure how big they are, and I'm not sure if he's here.
They're slightly larger than the minimum. Okay.
We have a larger plat we can look at. I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's all, that's all open down through there, Jake. Really?
150.
It's just a road. Huh? How long?
150.
150. Like 600, give or take, deep?
Yeah. Yeah. It's just a, most of it's open field.
Yeah. They won't need a six-foot cutting deck on their mower. About two strips.
These are views of the property from Clary Road. And then this is from the Mulligan roadside.
That's the field.
And these are surrounding properties on the Clary roadside.
That's on the Clary roadside, which not a lot of it hooks into Clary. Most of it's going to be all on the...
This is Mulligan.
Mulligan, yeah. In fact, that house is going to go, it's not even going to be there anymore, that one.
Just like that right there.
Yeah. That's the old site. I understand it's not going to be there. Need to open it up all the way through there. It's going to change the landscape, I tell you, forever.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second by Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Next is a conditional use permit for Jana Hill at 100 Castle Woods Boulevard. Ms. Hill is seeking the conditional use permit to operate an after-school program in an existing building on this property. It's a 1.40-acre parcel. The property is Zoned R1B. That's an aerial view. And then this is the building. She also owns Kids Corner Learning Center located at 50 Castle Woods Boulevard, and she's wanting to expand the business and move the after-school children to a larger building. Her proposed hours of operation are 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and this location was previously used as an adult daycare. That's the entrance going to the property off Castle Woods Boulevard, and these are surrounding properties. Ms. Hill is here today if y'all have questions for her.
Any questions for Ms. Hill?
Any questions?
I don't got it.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. All right. Let's move on to item five.
Which is site plan architectural review for Josh Vaughn of Delta Tree Service at 155 Gully Road. Mr. Vaughn was approved for a conditional use permit on this property in November of '21 to have an office for the tree service business and some storage also. It's a three-acre property, and it's zoned A2. That's an aerial view. This is his site plan. You can see the placement of the building on the property. It's, he's proposing a 2,500-square-foot metal building. It'll have a brick front. He shows his ADA parking in the front of the building. He also shows the parking surface there as crushed limestone. And if it's approved today, it will need to be contingent upon receipt of the grading and drainage plan because that's something we haven't received yet. This is just a rendering of what the building will look like.
You know, you can't see nothing other than just a black block.
It's a black spot with some white signs.
Exactly.
Some stars. I think it's brick up halfway, I believe is what it is. And I think for the area, I think it's...
I thought it was, I thought it was black metal sign.
Yeah, it looked like it.
It's actually not black. It's a kind of, it's a gray color on the ground.
Y'all want him to come forward.
We were really kind of making a joke of the video, really. It wasn't directed you.
I'm not feeling the black.
We were just making, you have to, you hadn't been at some of the other meetings. We've made some jokes about things, that's all.
All right. You good? Yeah. Make a motion, we said it?
Needs to be approved.
We approved it. That's right. We approved it.
So you make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Jay. Any further discussion? All, all four?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Contention upon the drainage?
Yeah.
Being approved.
Okay.
Yeah, that was in there.
Thank you.
Mr. Slade.
Good morning, gentlemen.
We might turn a light back on.
Yeah, well, I think we're going to have photographs, Jared, that are depicted here.
Oh, okay.
So we'll leave the lights lower so that we can hopefully see. First item under nuisance considerations is the Roger and Stephanie Moore nuisance property at 128 Poplar Ridge Drive. This is District 2 property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask either Mr. or Ms. Moore, or both, or someone representing them, should step forward at this time and enable demonstration of the photos.
All right. So we received a complaint on this property in September of '21. The caller said that Mr. Moore was running a business, an auto repair shop out on this property there in Bridlewood subdivision. These were pictures from 9/22. We did get a call, and Mr. Moore said that he was not running a business. He worked on family, friends, and neighbors' vehicles. And then these are the new pictures that were taken on the 27th. Kathy also got a call from Mrs. Moore on the 13th of April stating that they were dissolving the business.
So they're dissolving the business?
We actually set a business name up in 2020, but we never even opened an operating account or anything. So once we received Josh's letter, we decided to dissolve the business name. He's not running a business. He works on friends and family. We personally own, and this is crazy, seven vehicles. Three of them are classics. We own boat, jet ski, and ATVs. So on a good day, it looks like a used car lot at our house.
And if a couple of friends show up, it's, you know, we've been there 17 years, and it's been this way the whole time. I just built the detached garage to have more storage and all.
And the only thing that's changed in those years is that we now have that garage out to the side of our house.
But it is close to the road, so, I mean, I can understand people walking by going, he's got way too much stuff out there, but everything runs and drives. I mean, it's not broke down.
Everything's got tags.
And we've also, he's donated four different vehicles. One to a veteran that was, had an amputated leg from a motorcycle wreck, one through Wounded Warriors in Mississippi, one through Mercy House Adult Teen Challenge, and recently we had to buy one to fix up to give to my 80-year-old dad.
Steve needs a vehicle, too.
Hey, I might have one for sale.
Yeah, because your wife won't let you drive one you got, huh? You got that nice ride she's got.
Nope.
I hate to have to come here, but I think they just knocked on my door. We could have resolved this, but people just don't talk to people anymore. It is actually nuts.
And we built that, we could have just used basic plans for that shop, that garage. And, sorry, he calls it a shop. I was trying not to use that word. But we personally went and had plans drawn up to meet, to look exactly like our house, down to the pitch of the roof, which was extremely expensive. I mean, we probably have put $60,000 to $70,000 in that garage. Because of that, plus COVID prices, lumber went up so high when we started building.
It was a nice-looking shop, though.
I don't know what they're, I mean, what to complain about. I mean, I know some cable, look at it again in 60 days, and if it looks sane... I mean, I guess if you park...
And I have pictures of our house throughout the years, even without the garage there. And it's always been cars everywhere.
We have letters from our neighbors that live around us, too, if y'all don't know as well.
If, just to help everyone understand how we got here and what this board's role is, we don't enforce restrictive covenants. And so, any covenants that are applicable in Bridlewood that could be problematic by the activity that's there is not something that we're enforcing. We, we don't drive around, the county doesn't drive around looking for ways to hard-time folks. We react to complaints that are filed, and so that's what has happened here. You're here dealing with this situation because somebody or some people dropped a complaint about too much vehicle activity, and it started looking like there was a wholesale car repair operation right there in the middle of a subdivision. The location, the proximity to residential, the subdivision nature of the property makes all of that heightened, okay? So you're just, you're in a tough spot there, and you're going to have to just be mindful that others are watching, and if they continue to file complaints, we will continue to have to respond. So the best thing is to try to find that happy medium place where three or four vehicles everybody can sort of tolerate, but more than that, we got to figure out a way to get them out of sight so the neighbors don't keep complaining about stuff.
Okay.
All right? What I would suggest, gentlemen, is that you table this matter for a period of at least 30 days, and if there are no additional complaints that surface during that time, Renee's authorized to close the file.
All right. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I might just suggest try to keep everything, I may do it to park everything real neat. You know, I know, I know a family that's got, I can't even count the number of vehicles they have. They just buy what they want and save everything, but they, they do park there, it's very neat, very...
And our whole neighborhood is full of cars. This is a bunch of cars. I mean, they own antiques, and, you know, if you've got a family and say you've got two kids that are both driving, well, and then you got people coming over.
Right.
And I'm semi-retired, and I got a couple of friends that are somebody, they come over almost every day to see, just see what's going on, drink coffee. Well, and I finally told them, I said, "Don't park on the street anymore. Park in the driveway." Because they were parking on the street. I didn't think much of it because a lot of people park on the street. But being now I'm on the spotlight, I said, "Look, just park in the driveway." I said, "If you can't park in the driveway, just go home."
That's a good way to cut, that's a good way to cut down the company. We're full today. Pull up.
Thank y'all.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. President, item two is the Boring Properties LLC nuisance property. Darren Manuel, registered agent, 129 Surghai Lane. This is District 3 property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask for either Mr. Manuel or anyone here representing Boring Properties LLC to step forward, enable demonstration of photos.
All right. We received a complaint on this property in October of 2020 in regard to dilapidated structures, rubbish, weeds, inoperable vehicles.
When was that report called in?
2020, October 2020, or when these pictures were taken.
In 2020.
Mm-hmm. We received a call from the owner in November of '21. They said they were renting dumpsters to clean up. Kathy heard back in January of this year, said it would be cleaned up within the next month. Anyway, these are the pictures that were taken in October of '20. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Mr. Darren, why don't you go ahead and explain what's going on, and I'll, I kind of know what's going on.
Okay. So we bought this property a little ways back, I believe, in August. We gave the person who lived there 90 days to get his stuff out. It was a mess, as you can imagine. So about November, we had a neighbor that called and complained, of course. We've since purchased a mini excavator and a dump trailer, and as you can see from the pictures yesterday, we have most of it. It's not all the way done, but most of it cleaned off. The building's down. Everything's been, that can be burned has been burnt. The rest has been hauled off. I took, to give you an example, I took 86 tires in yesterday.
How many? Eighty-six?
Eighty-six.
To Jackson and paid $6 apiece to have them dropped off.
It was a mess, and we know that. And it's the reason we bought it, right? We've, we've got about 65 lots there in Robin Hood. We're trying really hard to get that area cleaned up and kind of back to where it used to be back when this was built, of course.
And these, this is not the original owner of the property. He bought it as, when it was a nuisance property, and he's just inherited the issue, and he's trying to clean it up.
Yeah. This went from 20, when we had the pictures, to you have it now, so you recently bought it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I gathered, yeah.
Yes.
And I'm going to make you a...
You're doing a lot to improve it.
Yeah. There will be some dumpsters on site next week, right? Monday, up there at the video store. And take advantage of those dumpsters while they're there. They'll be there a week.
Can't take tires. All the tires...
We got rid of all the tires. It was expensive.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think we got them all. There is one big pile of rubbish there, this photo that you see, but that's all metal, and I have a steel guy, you know, a scrap guy coming to pick that stuff up. If he doesn't, we'll load it in the dump trailer and take it to recycle ourselves.
Okay.
We separated the metal and...
What would be best, like, just take them away?
Scrap's up right now, about 11 cents a pound, I think.
Maybe I'll take it.
It's going up.
Might pay for the tires.
I think you'll find somebody will take it. It's going way up.
I appreciate what you're doing out there. Continue to keep it cleaned up, and I'm going to make a motion to table it.
We do, too. And we appreciate that you're making an effort. We appreciate that you're making an effort.
Thank y'all. Second, Jay.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Darren.
All right, thank you.
Officially, that, that public hearing is closed, but it closed before. Item three, Mr. President, Billy and Rebecca Bynum Estate, nuisance property, this is one fifteen Dogwood Branch. This is District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. If there's anyone here representing Bynum Estate, they should make their way forward. And they will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so we received a complaint about tires, rubbish, and debris back in January of this year. Certified mail was delivered. And these pictures were taken January twenty-sixth.
I can't really say that. I, I wrote about it yesterday. I mean, it is.
They had tires.
They are.
Is anyone here?
And these are the new pictures. Kathy's notes say this property has been cleaned up.
I mean, it didn't look that bad. It was a couple of bad places on the roof, but other than that, I.
I don't know if it's our projector or, or just the projector.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Blame it on the photographer.
I'm gonna make a motion.
That's what he's trying to do, blame it on the photographer.
It has been cleaned up, y'all, and I mean, it's in a lot better shape. I'm gonna just make a motion to table it. Any further discussion? Steve?
I didn't hear what, what the vote was, what they said.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion, carry.
Brad, you want us to, to take a look, another look at that parcel within the next thirty days?
Yeah.
Just to make sure. Yeah, I'm gonna.
Keep an eyeball on it. All right, that public hearing is closed. Item four is the Shirley J Evans and tenant, nuisance property, two oh nine Pear Lane, District One property. I believe this was a complaint that was, a continuing complaint's been called in about trash, the way that the solid waste is placed, or not placed, at the, at the public right-of-way on Pear Lane. And that is creating issues where animals are getting into the trash and other things. There are several residents who use that same area. And so, the complaint that was provided to us identified this specific person, Ms. Evans and/or a tenant at two oh nine, as the, as the culprit. So, that is why we engaged Ms. Evans and/or the tenant on this matter.
Is this a private drive, Craig?
I believe Pear Lane is a private drive. And so, we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask either Ms. Evans or the tenant at two oh nine Pear Lane, please be prepared to step forward this time.
I know where it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I know where it is. I know exactly where it is.
So, we received the complaint March twenty-eighth of this year. Complaint was that garbage was put out, not in cans, and was being scattered. These were the pictures on the twenty-eighth. We didn't see anything scattered. They did have just some bags of garbage out. So, what we decided to do was check it every Monday, Monday on garbage day. And we were unable to find anything. I think the owner or the tenant called and spoke to Kathy, and she said that she was gonna start, she had been taking the garbage to work, to the work dumpster because of this issue continuing to come up.
Yeah, I don't have like an SUV or a pickup truck to load like the big eighty-gallon trash bins. So, of course, that makes sense. Like, I bought one of those, but I can't get it to the street. So, that's why I haven't been sitting in my trash. I, I didn't notice. I actually live at two thirteen. There isn't anyone that lives at two oh nine, which is actually a trailer behind my house.
How many residents live back up in there? How many homes?
There's three of us. There's four houses. It's only three of us. And it's only me, my mom, and my daughter, so it's just.
You go around the curb, go down, go around the curb, then you're.
I'm the last house on the left, all the way on the end. I've been out there for, it'll be six years this year. But I do have one now, and I just haven't been putting my trash out since I got the notice about the bin.
Well, do they leave those there?
No, they take them. Those people that live out there, they have, I think Mr. Giles has a truck. And they have like a side-by-side where they can, you know, carry their, yeah, so I'm just kind of, you know.
Right.
Do you have to use a bin?
No.
Yeah, and see, like, I, I did notice, like, the few times that, um, the trash was like scattered the morning, I would sit it out the night before. I saw Mr. Giles picking up the trash, and of course, I apologized. I was like, okay, I'll sit it out in the morning. But it's like no way will I will know, like, if a dog is gonna come and get the trash.
First thing, you don't put it out the night before.
Right now, I stopped doing that yet.
But, and that's, that's the problem, Jay, you know, you don't, I think you should have to, but you don't. But that's what happens. I mean, it happens everywhere. The, the dogs know, up and down the road.
And this is another question I had. If I could get my new trash, can I, can I leave it at the curb?
Yeah, so that's a private drive. It's not on public right-of-way.
So, I would have to talk to Mr. Giles.
I think you've got to talk to the property owner and secure permission to do that. That could potentially be problematic. Before we go any further, do you mind telling the board your name?
I'm Amanda Purvis.
Okay, Amanda Purvis. All right, and so, you live at two thirteen?
Yes, sir.
All right, and there are two other families?
On the street.
That, that leave.
Yeah, there's Mr. Giles, his mom's house, oh, and Donna and her wife.
So, you're about, about, it's about four, five.
Four dwellings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, yeah. He was asking for a totally different reason, nothing to do with you.
Okay.
Yep. So, I was, I, I, I looked at our contract. No one is required to use a trash receptacle. You can leave your trash for pickup in a bag.
Okay.
There is no rule that says you gotta use a can. So, if a complaintant calls us and says, "My neighbors are putting their trash out, but they're not putting it in a can," we're not going to be contacting you anymore, okay? Now that we're clear what's going on here.
The problem is, though, I mean, the problem I have, though, is it tears it up.
It's trash everywhere, and I've seen him picking it up.
And I'd say it was your, I mean, your fault if he put it out there, in a way, you know? I mean, I understand, you can't control the animals, but that's what happens. Then when it scatters out everywhere, then either of the homeowners have to pick it up.
Yes.
Or then it's up and down the road, and then we have to pay, your, your tax dollars are paying for a crew to go out and pick up
That's right.
trash. It blew all up down the road.
So, Ms. Purvis, we're not going to hard time our residents over the issue of not using a trash can. We're, we're not gonna communicate with people about that or respond to complaints about that. The issue then becomes when trash does get strode.
I have to clean it.
Because it hasn't been put in a trash receptacle.
Yeah, I just haven't been sitting in my trash shell.
We have to respond to that. And so, that's, that's why we, we asked you to come today, and I appreciate your being here and helping the board understand a little bit more about this.
I would just talk with the land, the property owner, and see if you can't leave a bin out there.
Who's the property owner?
Uh, my property owner is Shirley Evans. But the private road, I think, is owned by Jimmy Giles and his family. Yeah.
She's right. If nothing else, I would just suggest, when you leave out in the morning, go to work and set your garbage out then, not the night before.
Yes, yes, sir, but I haven't been sitting it out the last.
Before seven o'clock now. Before seven o'clock.
Yeah, and I think now our trash, they run around ten.
Well, I mean, they can still get in it, but I'm just saying that would help the night before is, that's just.
Yeah, no, I haven't even sat it out at all.
So, this is a great opportunity to point something out. The, the, the contract that we have with our solid waste collector requires the county to make sure that our residents know, have your trash at the place where it's designated to be picked up no later than seven AM. And the reason is that they routinely will change their routes. And they will get started at seven AM, and if you wait until eight or nine to put your trash out, you might get missed on certain days, and that creates a lot of problems for these guys and for our solid waste collectors. So, getting your trash to the roadside by seven AM will help immensely. Having it tied up as well as you can get it, so that animals can't get into it.
And sometimes I pour a little bleach on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
That helps a lot, too.
That's good. That's good. So, you're doing what you can, and we appreciate very much your being here to help us.
So, what would you wanna do on that?
This should just be tabled, because this lady right here is not doing anything that's a violation of any of our nuisance considerations.
No, we don't, no, you're fine. We just encourage you to try to.
Take no action.
Take no action.
Sorry you had me here today.
It's okay.
Thank you.
So, we don't need a motion. We're just not gonna take any action.
No action taken. That public hearing is closed. Mr. President, if we're ready to move to item five, the OMA, O M A Capital LLC nuisance property, Sherwood Colette, registered agent, four oh five Oriole Way, this is District Five property. That public hearing is open. I'll ask if, for anyone related to or representing OMA Capital LLC or Sherwood Colette. Come forward, please.
All right, so we've received multiple complaints about an inoperable vehicle parked on this property. The most recent was February of twenty-two. There's no tag on it, and the front tire was off. These pictures were taken on the ninth. You can see the tire in our pictures. We haven't, we've sent the mail, didn't get any response. And these pictures were taken on the first of March. This, these are the new pictures taken yesterday. The car's still there, in the same condition.
It's under the carport?
It is. This is in Barnett Bend, three.
The car we're talking about, the light-colored car in the garage.
With the tire off of, again.
It is. The tire's on, no tag.
Would y'all like for Jay to suggest that we close this public hearing and take no action? Is that your recommendation, Jay? Mr. President, we will show that the public hearing is closed and no action is taken.
Let's get to something better.
Got a pity there.
Item six is a continuation of the old Pearson Road Mobile Home Park nuisance consideration. This is District One. I'll ask for anyone who is affiliated with the old Pearson Road Mobile Home Park to step forward at this time and enable demonstration.
Yeah, please state your name also.
Good morning. Twenty-nine St. Braxton. Good morning, sir.
Thank you.
You're a regular now.
Yes, sir. The W guys, hopefully, we can get this behind us now.
How are you doing now?
I'm doing good, sir.
All right, so these were the first pictures taken August of twenty-one, showing the condition of that property. And there were five or six homes that, five that needed to be removed from the property. These pictures were the newer pictures, March of twenty-nine, March twenty-ninth of twenty-two, where some of the work had been done. And so, these are the new pictures, and I think all but one of the homes are gone now.
All but one of them?
They're all gone. The, the one that's still left is the private individual. I was understanding that you guys would have to send a letter to him. We don't own that one. I have told him that the Rankin County Building Department would like for it to be moved, but I was understanding that there has to be some letter or something sent, you know, to him.
So, you have, you own the trailer park?
Yes, sir.
But you allow people to own?
Yes, sir. We, we, we own eleven of the trailers. All the rest of them are private individuals that simply rent lots.
And you just, you rent a lot, so.
Yes, sir.
Did they move them in there, or did you?
Most of them were there when we purchased the property.
So, you sold them the?
They, they already owned them, the mobile homes at that time. There, the one in question before, where the, the lady had passed, we sold that one to the gentleman in, I think, nineteen. It was inspected at that time and passed. The condition that it had gotten in on the inside, they put it in that condition. The outside, of course, is my responsibility.
So, you sold that trailer in two thousand nineteen?
Yes, sir. I, I think nineteen it was. I'd have to look at my records, but I believe it was nineteen.
Jared, this is, this is the one that we were gonna get this phase of it taken care of first. Then we're gonna start on the individual property owners there.
So, what we, what we initially started on has been taken care of.
Sounds like he's removed all of it.
Yes, sir.
You're responsible for it.
Yes, sir. I've, I've taken care of all the grounds, because y'all said whether we own the trailer or not, the grounds is our responsibility. So, I've, I've taken care of all that.
Okay, what's your plans for the future?
Our plans for the future is, is to, all of the mobile homes we own now, that, to go through them, get them in better shape, as far as the outsides, insides, anything that, any violations that we will do an inspection that we know now, since we've gotten a list, you know, through y'all, you know, anything like that, put them up to the standards. And then, we're giving letters to the individuals that their mobile homes will have to adhere to those same standards, or they will have to be removed. So, we're gonna make them, you know, adhere to y'all's standards also.
Well, I would think you, as a property owner, would wanna require them, yourself,
Yes, sir.
make sure whatever they put on your property is up to code, you know?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, you're gonna have to.
There, there will be nothing else.
I mean, it may be them, but really, it's kind of coming back to you.
Yes, sir. Our new understanding is, now the requirement is fifteen years old or newer. So, nothing else that ever comes in there will be, you know, an older mobile home or any of that.
Inspected before it comes in there.
Yes, sir. That's what, that's my understanding.
Fifteen years, that means it's gonna pass inspection.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think we're, we're supposed to send pictures, or they will go out and inspect it, or prior to us, they've been purchasing it. If, if we bought more or whatever, or if someone wanted to rent a lot, then we would work through the building department and make sure that it was the way it should be.
I think I remember when we, one of your trips up here, there was some discussion about the other mobile homes you have aren't necessarily in great shape on the inside.
Most of them are in pretty good shape. They're, they have tenants living in them now. They're in fair, fairly good shape. We're, we're going through them, looking at any violations there may be, and we're correcting them. So, at some point, I understand that they're gonna wanna come through, look at those. So, they will be corrected, yes. Anything that they find will be, you know, taken care of, just as we've done this.
So, you, of, of the ones that are left there, how many do you actually own?
Eleven.
So, you actually own eleven of them?
Yes, sir.
How many's left there?
Sir?
How many's there currently, all of them?
I believe there are twenty-five now, after the ones we've taken out. There was thirty-one total.
So, do we have a recommendation from y'all, anything we need to do?
Start the process in honor.
Well, on the, the individual trailer.
Other than that one individual trailer?
All of them.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna do all.
This is phase one, and I think we got phase one. We moving to phase two.
I, I think y'all said once we got to this point, the groundskeeping part of it would be phased out, and then we would go to the other phase.
Well, are you planning on moving something in, like, real soon?
No, sir.
Good.
No, sir. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna concentrate on the ones we got, make sure that they're right, everything's good with them, get, you know, get the department happy with there, and, and then, you know, go from there.
I'd rather not anymore come in till we get all this straightened out.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that was our intention.
Okay.
Well, appreciate your help.
All right.
Yes, sir. I appreciate y'all. Apologize for them to be here.
Y'all know what to do then, clear out. Okay, good.
I would suggest just a tabling, so that it's clear that this is a continuing matter. We don't have to restart notice.
Right.
Let's table it for sixty days. That should give us enough room now for them to move to the second phase.
That work for y'all? Okay.
And my understanding is they're gonna, I guess, choose a few at the time, not, you know, a huge thing.
I'm leaving it up to them, and yes, I think, whatever they, however they think is gonna be best.
Right. And I, and I work with them. They, you know, they know I've, I've been cooperative, so whatever they, you know, tell me to do.
Is, is the place still for sale?
It is.
Your buyer's still looking at it?
They're, you know, they're kind of on the fence now.
The one that was here before, is they still looking at it?
We haven't heard anything else from them. I think they're kind of waiting to see what's going on, you know.
Well, I, I know I would if I was them.
Reevaluate and, you know, it's a prime location. It just, you know, ideally, what I would like to see happen is maybe come back at some point and rezone it, and just do away with all the mobile homes like you had suggested, and put single-family homes in there. I'm gonna actually be looking into the requirements, or what the lots requirements would be for that. And I think that would be a better solution for the county and, you know, developer or us, or whoever.
A lot better for everybody.
Well, you can go ahead and get rezoned.
Yeah, we can get, we can work on, we can work on that, getting it rezoned.
That's, that's what I was, uh.
Craig, is that something we can work on?
We had been initially talking about. If, if we keep it, that's gonna be our plan, is to look at that.
That would be, uh, that would be my wish.
Because it's a good location, it's good, you know, and it would, it would be better all the way around for everybody.
Yeah, well, I, I like your, like your thoughts.
Yes, sir.
It makes it a lot easier when the property owner themselves are asking for the rezoning, the application comes from the property owner. It's not a county.
No, sir, no, sir. It, it had been in our minds that some, you know, all along, it just.
When y'all get ready, just tell us, and we'll make it.
This sort of give us a push forward to, hey, look, let's go on a phase toward, like, getting in our next phase.
Community happier.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Honestly, I tell you, you got a bullseye on you.
I know it. I know it. And, and as you said.
Because where you're sitting doesn't help either. I mean, you're now, they're rebuilding the highway.
Yes, sir.
I mean, where you, you, it's just, you got a target on you.
And, and it took years to get that way, and we, we, it was a huge task to get it done, but I, we've got it done, and, and, you know, made it happen.
All right, well, I'd make a motion then to table it for sixty days. Move on, and, and we'll work toward cleaning it up and hopefully rezon it.
All right, we got a second by Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, carry.
So, if we do rezon it and it meets sales requirements, there won't be a problem there.
But as far as I'm concerned.
You know, as our investors and everybody else will be looking at, that's something I'd be good, you know, to tell them that'd be happy about.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes our planning commission. Our next meeting will be June the second, nine AM.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Set from planning commission into.
And second by Jared. All in favor? All opposed? Hall opposed? Motion carried. Alright, now we're going into the Rankin County Board of Supervisors agenda.
Shortest week.
I guess, do we have any? Craig, do you have any?
Hey, before we get to there, can I have one deal under this public comment, cause I know he's needing to get out of here. Uh, Harrison. Can you give us an update quick? Now, not one of the mic word updates. I know it's been a lot of meeting and talking and getting things accomplished. Andrew Chapel, where we're at and where we're going quickly.
Uh, quickly, we've started on, they started on the north end. They've got probably over half the job covered in asphalt, with the base asphalt. Uh, they're gonna start next week putting the surface on and working the shoulders up to that point and grassing. And they're gonna start tearing out the last, I believe they like four thousand feet on the job, Steve. And they gave us a plan of how they're gonna do that and they're gonna start tearing that out and moving forward with that.
I looked at it last day or so, wouldn't it? It's hard to measure, uh, what percentage we're finished with, because a whole lot of work went into early moving earth. But in just my mind, I'm, I'm thinking we may be seventy percent.
Yeah, I'm gonna say we're somewhere around seventy. Only because, cause I mean, they've got the covert work done on the whole job.
Whole job's covered, yeah.
And, uh, so all we really like is two heel cut downs, some base repairs and then pulling the asphalt up and regrading and putting aggregate down.
My, my point now is, how, where are we setting on funds? What per, about what percent do we still have control of?
I would say we're about seventy percent right now.
So about.
A lot of the asphalt will be in the next pay request. We've probably got, we're holding more than.
Yeah, we're holding more than that.
You're saying we're holding seventy percent?
No, no, no. I'm saying we haven't paid, I don't think we've paid them over fifty percent because the next pay request will be a lot of the asphalt.
Like, when they, that's a big pay item in the job, Steve, is the asphalt. So as they start laying that down, it gets bigger and bigger and they're gonna have a pretty good pay request once they get this one done.
This job may end up having some penalties, just so the public knows.
When did they kick in? Have they kicked in yet?
Uh, starting, starting soon. It's starting soon. But anyhow, the.
We gotta figure some weather delays and that bread and, and different things, but we're getting close on it.
The thing that hurts, but we have to do what we gotta do. It's this guy bid on his job in October. And asphalt has doubled in price.
Fuel has.
I mean, here he is buying asphalt on prices. So I know it's terrible and I, and I have people that says, boy, you gonna get in, you got a ticket after them. They're hurting and they're still coming to work six and seven days a week. So just bear with us a few more months and we're gonna have a really good road. It is what it is and if we could take Rankin County and put it up there in that DC District of Columbia area, I think we can do a better job.
Yeah, I, I feel like in the next month, month and a half, we, we pretty well be just about through with the project.
Thank you.
Craig?
You have your list, Brad?
Yes, I do have a list.
So again, gentlemen, we're about to enter into the public comment section of our work session agenda. We, you know, the, the board controls the public comment section, how it happens, what happens. Our typical policy on public comment is that we receive comments. Uh, sometime back, we had a board meeting where we specifically received, end of March, we received comments from the public concerning the medical marijuana legislation that the state legislature adopted and passed, governor signed into law. Uh, and I, my understanding is we have some addition, some additional public comment. I, I wanted to simply remind the board that, that it is comment. Uh, we don't, uh, receive questions and we don't give answers during public comment. Those who are asked to come forward to make comment to the board are welcome to come and make comment, but don't expect a question and answer session.
Alright, let's get it started. Who wants to go first? Y'all just come up and just state your name and your address. Let's try to keep it three, four minutes.
Good morning. That's okay.
That's alright. I'm Monica Baldwin, District Four, and I'm completely taken off guard because I had a simple question. I guess I'm not able to ask it.
Oh, you're welcome to ask.
I am, I?
Ask your question, don't expect an answer.
Oh, well, that's not unusual, um, cause I've been trying to get an answer for a month. I'm wondering, not I'm wondering, I'm asking if the board plans to vote on the marijuana legislation? Because the deadline is in four days. And I'm gonna tell you what it appears like. It appears like y'all are riding the fence because next year's an election year. And I believe that we, as your constituents, have a right to know where you stand. I mean, you're either for or against and we need to know that. So I guess we'll be here in four days to see if you vote or don't vote. I'm really disappointed. I have my supervisor, Steve, I've contacted you, asking when you were gonna vote and you said it was up, you haven't heard from the president yet. Then I heard where it wasn't the president's decision, it was the board's decision. And then, um, I emailed Mr. Cross. He said he emailed me back. I never got the email. You forwarded me what he sent. I don't know what's happening. I feel like I'm being strung along. Um, I'm not there. I'm nobody. I don't deserve an answer. That's how I feel. I'm very frustrated. So I'll be here again in four days. Thank you.
Alright. Patricia McNulty?
Patricia McNulty, I live at two thirteen East Town, right up the street here. I said, I want to add from our last meeting, my comments are just simply to say, um, I felt like we were sort of put down as constituents. With Mr. McDaniel stood up and spoke, but actually he made a good point. Most of his comments made a point for us, is this marijuana bill, we understand that it's law. I think a lot of people think that we are, you know, unreasonable, uneducated people. I don't mean to be boastful, but we have spent hours and hours, uh, looking into talking to doctors, um, not getting doctors out of their emergency room when they're half asleep and been working all night. But we've done a lot of research and each of us, there may be only five of us here, but we represent. I represent my community. I represent many people from my church. So we all represent many people that are here. But this thing is about money. I mean, that's just pure and simple. Our county needs money. But I wanna reiterate the fact that people move to Rankin County because it is a beautiful county. I've lived here all my life and it's a beautiful county. It's, it's safe, it, you know, we have wonderful law enforcement and, um, we don't mind. People have been driving to Jackson for years, buying liquor. So it's not a big deal. It's, you know, most people live in Rankin County, work in Heinz County. Uh, anyway, driving to Heinz County or Richland or whoever opts in, uh, you know, that's, they can get it there and we understand that. There's just things in that bill that, that are written which can be a real pathway to corruption. Money corrupts, it always does. And, uh, we're hoping that this is not a, a consideration of you guys and that you would consider your constituents. And as Monica said, um, we live in a time where people distrust our officials. I'm not speaking of you guys, but state officials. You know, constituents are getting angry out here because how our legislators and people are voting and don't seem to be listening to us. So we would humbly appreciate, uh, knowing where each of you stand on this issue, because, you know, people vote and, uh, as Monica said, when you don't stand up, when you, what does that say? You stand up for nothing, you stand up for everything or it's turned around. But we wanna know where you stand and we who voted for you, uh, you know, we would like to know that because that will be a consideration in next election. I don't mean that as a threat, it just is what it is. So anyway, we thank you for listening to us and it's very considerate of y'all to listen to us and we appreciate it here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got it. Joseph Oaks?
Yes, Joseph Oaks, District Four. Um, I just want to support and identify, I, the comments, it's already been made, so I don't need to reiterate. We really would like to know how you guys stand on this before the, the deadline. But, um, I also want to tell the Sheriff Bailey how I appreciate what all you've done in this, uh, most recent, you know, incidents and the way you handled it, the way the city of Brandon handled it. I just wanna express my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cassandra?
My name is Cassandra Oaks and I don't like to get up in front of people, as my friends know, but this is, um, something heavy on my heart. I've prayed about it a lot. I prayed for you, every one of you, from Mr. Calhoun to Mr. Gant, every one of you have been on my prayer list. And, um, I'm not gonna preach to you, but I wanna remind you that we serve a God that's not gonna be mocked. A man reaps what he sows and I'm asking you, um, you can glare at me, but, um, I'm more concerned with what God thinks. And, um, things have consequences and I just ask you, you want us to vote for you, so you, you, we deserve to know how you stand. And, um, I just thank you for letting me get up here and I'm, I plead with you from the bottom of my heart, please opt out of this. This was a deceptive ballot, very deceptive. And, um, you know that and I know it and God knows it and he knows what's in your heart and I just thank you. Please consider opting out of this. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Jeffcoat?
I hadn't really planned to say anything today, but I'll just make mine real short. I, I guess just in the opening prayer, when he, he talked about, he said, uh, do what's best for the community, you know, pretty everybody would do what's best for the community. So that's what I say, just, just do whatever's best for the community and that would, looks like that would be the, uh, you know, not to go forward with this medical marijuana. It's just gonna make it more available in the county. It's gonna just be more out there, it's gonna be more, more products out there, uh, especially like the concentrates. You get the concentrates, you get more people using it, get more addicted to it and it's just gonna get more and more use of that, of it. And then you're gonna, if you get more facilities in the county, more processing, more sales, you're just gonna have the marijuana industry is just gonna be more powerful in your county and help, uh, control things and even help control the government. That's, that's all I wanna say. Thanks a lot.
Hey, Mr. David, why, Mr. David, why are you up there? You're the only one besides one more person that's contacting me and I explained to you my stance on it. And nobody else has contacted me and, and asked my stance on it. But you know where I stand at it and that's where I'm gonna stand. Thank you, appreciate it. No further public comments? Alright, Mr. Keith?
Uh, if y'all have any questions about Monday's agenda, I'm here.
Executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Craig, do we have an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Alright, first. Alright. Do I, do I have a motion, the need go into executive session?
Hey, Brad, I've got an, I've got an additional business I have.
Alright, go ahead.
So, um, got a contact from a representative of the local church that is requesting permission to use the courthouse annex parking area for a outdoor event. Uh, they, they have a, they have the capacity to use a, uh, an, an outdoor movie screen and to display or broadcast a religious based movie on the screen. And it would be a community event and they are asking for permission to use the courthouse annex parking lot. The request would relate to a period on Saturday, May the fourteenth. So I don't believe there would be any conflict, given the date of the request with county business. And, and they would like to use it from six PM to nine PM. And so it's, uh, it's a narrowly tailored request and it would be on it at a period of time where I don't believe there'd be any conflict. You guys control the properties that are owned by the county. Courthouse Annex is owned by the county and so it would be your responsibility to determine whether or not they would have permission to do that.
Before do you need on this?
Uh, we would just need a motion to authorize, uh, county administrator to work with the request, the persons who's making the request to, to identify any details.
You good with the share?
So we would, we would need to require the church to provide porta potties, because they're not gonna have access to any of our facilities. Uh, and so we would make that a condition, that they would provide comfort stations, um, at their own expense. I would also, I, I would hope that being a local church and wanting to make a good impression, that they will leave the property in as good a condition as they found it. Uh, but we would probably want to insist that if there are any, if there's any trash, that they'll be responsible for cleaning it up, uh, and, and restoring the property to the condition that they found it. Those would be the two conditions that I can think of. I doubt there'll be any need for traffic control or anything like that. But, uh, we would want to define the space that they can occupy and be clear, you know, it needs to be here.
City of Brandon need to be notified.
They've already been instructed that just because they've come to us and asked for permission, that doesn't mean they clear all of the requirements. And I encourage the same person to contact Matthew Dodd at the city and inquire what, if anything, should they, you know, obtain from the city in wait permission.
Okay.
We section all. Yes. I, again, I, uh, it's, there's a few details that need to be determined, but my thought would be you guys simply make the authorization and allow Keith and myself, Jared to work together, try to work out any of the details.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. William, do we need to add this to the agenda?
Add it please.
I'll make a motion to add to agenda.
Uh, my second.
Hall in favor? Aye. Hall opposed? Now I'll make a motion to approve.
So move.
Hall in favor? Aye. Hall opposed? Any additional business?
Any other thing else?
Not an additional.
Alright.
Would you have any for executive session?
I make a motion.
Personnel?
I make a motion, uh, going to, need to go into executive session, discuss personnel.
I'll second it. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Hall opposed? Motion carried. Going into executive session.
Make a motion going to executive session?
Second.
Motion made by Jay.
Second by myself. All opposed, aye?
Aye.